Este comité de seis profesionales muy activos y hoy tenemos a dos de ellos. Entonces, voy a pasar el micrófono a Mariela y a Nuria, que son miembros del comité y presentarán el comité y también a los oradores invitados que tenemos hoy con nosotros. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, Gladys. Solo es para un propósito visual, la mayor parte de la información se ha distribuido en los brochures. Mi nombre es Mariela Amzapryne y Nuria está aquí conmigo. Queremos introducir, básicamente casi todo se ha dicho, pero de una manera más visual aquí, por qué impulsamos a esta grupo de mujeres a intercambiar información y tener la oportunidad de conectar con las mujeres más jóvenes, con las mujeres más experimentadas o viceversa, las mujeres más experimentadas para pasar su experiencia, para mentir. También queremos animar a otras mujeres a obtener información en términos de compartir oportunidades de carrera y también crear competitividad profesional dentro de la EAG, así como la retención de mujeres en la industria de las ciencias terrestres y ingeniería. Quiero introducir a nuestra grupo especialmente para mis colegas que no pudieron asistir aquí. Nuria seguirá después, así que voy a empezar con ella. Nuria Fatio de Martin, ella ha ayudado con la cultura de las redes sociales y desarrollamos juntos algunas ideas sobre cómo contactarte mejor y es exploradora geofísica en SEPSA en España. Pero especialmente me gustaría mencionar a los otros colegas, por ejemplo, voy a empezar desde aquí y ir hacia arriba. Carolina Le Tordu, es principal geóloga en la compañía Schlumberger y está basada en Brunei y realmente ha participado con muchas ideas, así que algunos de ustedes escucharán sobre nuestras actividades. Muchas ideas para actividades vino de ella, así que estoy muy agradecida por Carolina por participar. También Nadia Alceabot, es jefa de nuestro comité y está basada en Kuwait y trabaja para la compañía de petróleo Kuwait. Es señora ingeniera petrolera senior y, bueno, yo misma, mencioné que mi background es en geología de ingeniería, pero soy señora administradora de cuentas, así que ahora estoy más en el campo comercial trabajando para Paradigm y estoy basada en Berlín, en Alemania. Andrea Cadena, es moderadora de discusión, así que también ha estado ayudando con muchas ideas. Así que si vas a nuestro grupo LinkedIn, también verás mucha participación de Andrea, comenzó de ella. Trabaja para Marathon Oil y es petrofísica basada en Estados Unidos. Susane Lindorfer, es operadora geofísica, está basada en UK y trabaja para Petroleum Geoservices. Y Nuria seguirá con algunas otras ideas, pero básicamente todos nosotros estuvimos participando y estuvimos motivados a invitarlos aquí a participar con sus ideas y somos solo un punto de partida para organizar sus ideas, solo tener un punto de referencia, pero básicamente todo es sobre ustedes. Esperamos que puedan participar con sus asuntos y algunas de las actividades que comenzamos desde que creamos este grupo, en realidad Gladys ha creado este grupo y ella nos ha capturado. Algunas de las ideas, la mayoría de ellas encontrarán en nuestro grupo LinkedIn que los invitamos a participar. Algunas de las ideas fueron, por ejemplo, cada mes un consejo de un experto o cada lunes para obtener una nueva idea para inspirarlos, Lunes de Motivación y también comenzamos algunas discusiones técnicas y los animamos a participar en esto. En realidad, primero Nuria probablemente mencione algunas de las siguientes actividades en caso de que las preguntas y respuestas sean muy apasionantes al final, solo para asegurarse de que ya han capturado estas ideas y luego les presentaremos a los oradores, lo siento por hacer un poco de confusión aquí. ¿De acuerdo?
Hola. Lo que el comité planea hacer es continuar con las actividades de LinkedIn, anuncios y discusiones así como promover y organizar cursos cortos y también animar a las mujeres a presentar artículos técnicos y participar activamente en nuestro comité. Otro punto fuerte que queremos desarrollar es la mentorización y consejos de carrera y el compartir entre las mujeres en la industria petrolera, así que es por eso que nos gustaría que compartieran con nosotros sus ideas, comentarios, feedback respondiendo al encuesta que distribuimos justo al principio de la sesión. De acuerdo, así que realmente los animamos, todas las mujeres, a unirse a nosotros, unirse al grupo y participar activamente en conferencias, comités y también en nuestra comunidad.
Esta vez oficialmente presentando los próximos oradores, nuestros oradores destacados y estamos muy honradas de tener aquí con nosotros. El primer orador será Roberta Camuffo, es directora de exploración en América del Norte, Brasil, trabajando para Repsol y trabaja en descubrimientos previos y recientes en Alaska, te contará más detalles. Y después de eso, Intisar Alkindi también seguirá con su presentación. Ella es directora de exploración en desarrollo petrolero basado en Oman y es la primera directora de exploración en Oman y por supuesto somos todos miembros de la EAG aquí y nos gustaría animar a las otras mujeres a participar. Entonces, Roberta.
Bien. Hola a todos, mi nombre es Roberta y estoy aquí para compartir mi experiencia en el negocio petrolero como mujer. Empecé con esta imagen no debido al juego de soccer, que por cierto es que va a ganar, pero porque porque en Brasil tuve una reciente y muy buena aventura, una aventura profesional que fue realmente desafiante para mí y al final gracias a Dios tuvimos éxito como grupo, como equipo, como empresa. Bien. Vamos a empezar con esta imagen, obviamente esto es una broma. Lo siento, tienes el hombre, ahora tenemos la mujer, pero quiero hacer un par de puntos usando esta imagen. El primer punto es que somos diferentes y no podemos ser hombres porque somos mujeres y creo que sería un gran error pensar que somos iguales, somos diferentes. Y el segundo punto es que tenemos muchos más botones que los hombres. Podemos entregar niños que los hombres no pueden. Entonces, ¿por qué quieres desactivar tantos botones para obtener solo uno? Es mucho mejor ajustarlos todos y ese es el desafío. Tienes que ajustarlos todos, todos los módulos juntos para obtener una vida completa. La felicidad es el equilibrio, así que si quieres tener una carrera, no necesitas elegir entre tener una familia y tener una carrera. Puedes tener ambas. Y me gustaría empezar introduciendo un poco a mí misma, soy de Venecia, esa es yo con mi hija. Así es como nos muestran en Venecia y esto es solo para decir que no tengo ningún o no tenía ningún background en geología en términos de, no tenemos geología en Venecia, no tenemos monte, no tenemos roca y no tenemos petróleo, tal vez gracias a Dios no tenemos petróleo. Pero empecé realmente de cero, fui inyectada en esta industria sin saber nada. La industria está llena de oportunidades, es solo una pregunta de elegir, puedes elegir. A veces haces una buena elección, a veces haces algunos errores, todos los hacen. Pero no necesitas ser hijo de nadie o de una especie particular, puedes hacerlo. Y esta es mi prioridad, como dicen, desde el principio, elijo, elijo tener una familia, elijo tener una hija. No puedo pensar en mi vida sin mi hija o sin mi familia. El desafío fue encontrar este equilibrio, encontrar la forma de manejar mi obsesión por el proyecto porque cada vez que me enamoro del proyecto, me pongo obsesionada, bebo el proyecto, duermo el proyecto, como el proyecto, hablo sobre el proyecto, necesito hacer mi proyecto y mi familia porque quiero ser bueno en mi familia también. Necesito estar allí para mi familia, para mi hija. No trabajo solo, trabajo en casa, trabajo en el oficio, pero necesito hacer algunas otras cosas. Me encanta decir que ese es mi esposo y no puedes verme porque estoy conduciendo el bote. Y esta no es mi moto, es mi moto, mi esposo tiene otra moto. Y me gusta pescar y quien me conoce sabe que me gusta obtener siempre el pez más grande. Me encanta cocinar, esto es gnocchi, un plato italiano y si tengo que regenerarme, seré un chef porque aprendí a hacerlo. Como dije, nací en Kyodja, Kyodja es una isla muy pequeña en el lago de Venecia, así que ni siquiera Venecia, es un lugar muy pequeño. Desde ahí me mudé a Milán para trabajar, eso fue difícil, muy difícil, probablemente el movimiento más difícil que hice porque estaba sola. Después de varios años encontré a mi esposo y la vida cambió completamente. Me mudé por un breve periodo a Brusel como geólogo geofísico, siempre estaba en el medio y luego tomamos la decisión importante, nos mudamos a Buenos Aires. Mi esposo me apoyó, se quitó, también es geólogo, se quitó su trabajo y me llegó a Buenos Aires. Ese fue un gran cambio, éramos una familia, así que decimos lo que sea, cómo sea, pero juntos. Y fue bueno, también fue una gran sorpresa para mí desde el punto de vista de aceptación como mujer. En Buenos Aires, en Argentina en general, encontré mucho más aceptación que en Italia, mucho más aceptación. En Argentina, no sé si a los argentinos les guste o no, pero tienen una mujer como presidente. En Italia estamos tan lejos de eso. Así que después de eso, mi hija nació, así que como familia nos mudamos a Maracaibo. Tienes que tener en cuenta, y probablemente ya sabes, que cada vez que haces un movimiento como este está cerrando una vida, varias vidas, porque somos tres, y empieza todo de nuevo. Empieza un nuevo idioma, una nueva cultura, una nueva casa, una nueva escuela, nuevos amigos, un nuevo oficio, un nuevo proyecto, todo. Pero no solo para mí, para mi esposo y para mi hija. Ese fue un periodo difícil también, en ese periodo gastamos más dinero en medicamentos que en comida debido al clima, fue muy complicado de manejar. Desde ahí nos fuimos al paraíso, Denver, todo estaba funcionando, no, no, enfermedad, nada, así que estábamos tan felices. Allí mi hija comenzó, digamos, la escuela, estaba en el primer grado, ha estado en el kindergarten en Venezuela, en Argentina. De nuevo, enfrentando desafíos como cambiar el idioma, etc. Aquí ya estaba trabajando como principal geofísica y luego me convertí en líder de equipo. Desde ahí nos mudamos a Houston y fui consejero de un grupo técnico del Golfo de México. Y de nuevo, quedamos un par de años en Denver, luego Houston, un par de años en Houston y luego Brasil. De nuevo, mi hija ya tenía nueve, diez años, aquí acepté la posición de directora de exploración y recuerdo el primer día que llegó a casa, dijo, sí, sí, estoy en la escuela americana, puedo hablar en inglés. Ah, sí, nací en Argentina, puedo hablar en español, sí, somos italianos, puedo hablar en Italia. Pero los niños aquí juegan en portugués y no puedo hablar portugués, así que estaba muy triste. Un par de semanas comenzó a hablar portugués, así que todo era más fácil. Y luego en 2008 nos fuimos a Houston y fui promovida como directora regional de exploración en América del Norte y Brasil. Esta es una vida típica probablemente para una persona E&amp;P, pero tienes que pensar que si eres una mujer tienes tantos botones cada vez que tienes que ajustar todo, así que necesitas organizarte. Puedes hacerlo, pero tienes que trabajar duro, necesitas encontrar el equilibrio entre tu familia. Si tu familia no está feliz, nunca estarás feliz, no en el oficio, no en casa, nunca. Así que necesitas encontrar el equilibrio en tu casa y luego puedes entregar tu carrera lo más que quieras. Mi trabajo, lo que hago, gasto el mayor tiempo posible con mi equipo, esos son unos pocos miembros de mi equipo en Brasil. A veces voy al campo, gasto mucho tiempo en frente del ordenador como todo el resto y desafortunadamente estoy gastando demasiado tiempo en el avión viajando. Me mencioné el proyecto Brazilian, el proyecto Brazilian, el proyecto pre-sold es probablemente el más exitoso aventura de exploración en los últimos años, hubo muchas descubrimientos, Topi, Carioca, Guara, Júpiter, Sagitario, etc., etc. Estábamos involucrados en muchos de ellos, todavía estamos involucrados en muchos de ellos y más de 30 billones de barras de petróleo ya se descubrieron. Esto es realmente emocionante, esta es una oportunidad que quien trabaja en exploración sabe que esto sucede probablemente una vez cada cien años, así que fui muy afortunada de estar allí. Este es Brasil, este proyecto pre-sold está ubicado en la zona de Rio de Janeiro. Esto es un zoom, tienes Basia de Espíritu Santo, Basia de Campos, Basia de Santos y esa área rosa es lo que los brasileños llaman la picanya azul. Azul porque significa azul, pero está en el agua. La picanya es la mejor pieza de carne que puedes encontrar en Brasil. Esos bloques amarillos y naranjas son los bloques donde antes o después estuvimos involucrados durante mi estadía en Brasil y todavía tenemos algunos proyectos, algunos bloques allí. Este es un zoom en la basura de Santos, puedes ver cuántas descubrimientos tenemos allí. En el pre-sold solo un par de wells fueron excavados para encontrar agua, Guarani y Azula, todos los demás son descubrimientos. Te muestro una línea seismica pasando por eso, tienes el nivel de agua, nivel de fondo, tienes agua aquí, esto es un pez, está nadando, así que es agua. Y en rosa aquí tienes el sal, este sal es muy muy diferente del sal que tienes en el Golfo de México. Este es un sal autóctono, la base de este sal nunca se movió. En el Golfo de México el sal se mueve, así que lo que sea debajo del sal es solo sub-sal pero a veces es más joven que el sal. Aquí, lo que sea debajo del sal es siempre mayor que el sal. En azul es la reserva principal, la sección SAG. Así que cada vez que tienes una cerradura de cuatro caminos en la base del sal, tienes acumulación. Esto parece fácil, no fue cuando comenzamos, luego entendimos y es una forma simplista de verlo, hay algunas complicaciones, pero básicamente es esto. Ahora, ¿alguna vez has sentido discriminación porque eres una mujer? Recibí esta pregunta miles de veces y tengo una respuesta diferente en función del momento de mi vida. Al principio de mi carrera, era la mejor, era un genio, era el genio. Pero nadie entendió eso, yo era la única que creía en eso. Y eso me creó tanta frustración que no me importaba si era una mujer o no, estaba sofriendo que era un genio y nadie entendió eso. Luego, después de varios años, entendí que no era un genio. Por el contrario, tenía muchos huecos en mi conocimiento, huecos que tenía que llenar. Así que realmente me desafío, tratando de ser bueno, tratando de hacer algo más y uso un procedimiento, digamos así, cada vez que terminaba un proyecto, me decía a mí misma, "de acuerdo, todos terminan un proyecto, así que soy solo la media". Ser el mejor, ganar, ser el mejor de todos, no ser el mejor de hombres o de mujeres, no pensaba en hombres o mujeres. Quiero ser el genio que pensé que era diez años antes. Necesito hacer algo más para obtener estos cinco, siete por ciento más de calidad que puede hacer la diferencia. Ese fue realmente un modo de cambiar, de desafiar a mí misma. Aprendí a ser intensivo, efectivo, eficiente porque no trabajo solo. Quiero ser el mejor en el oficio, pero quiero ser el mejor con mi hija, quiero ser el mejor con mi esposo, quiero ser el mejor como pescador y marinero y cocinero y quiero ser el mejor. Así que mi día tiene que ser intensivo, efectivo, eficiente, no puedo perder el tiempo. Es solo una pregunta de hacer y puedes hacer. Fue una batalla contra mí misma y quien me conoce entiende lo que estoy diciendo, siempre está contra mí misma. No me importa si soy una mujer o si soy un hombre, no me importa si el tipo que tengo enfrente es un hombre o es una mujer. Quiero ser el mejor de todos, solo así. Y quiero ser el mejor en casa tanto como quiero ser el mejor en el oficio. Al principio de mi carrera, solo porque necesitaba siempre encontrar este equilibrio que me permitió estar feliz, no sentirme sucio en cualquier momento, tuve que esperar. Estaba concentrada solo en la parte técnica, quiero ser el mejor técnico. Porque crecer la carrera de gestión significa viajar y no se me permitía viajar demasiado porque mi hija era joven, estábamos andando por el mundo, no había familia alrededor. Mi esposo estaba trabajando en rotación, no estaba en casa, así que solo estaba esperando. Sé paciente, el momento llegará. En 2004 decidí que mi hija estaba suficientemente grande y acepté la posición como directora de exploración en Brasil y comenzé esta aventura que ahora es tan grande, tan bonita. Después de cuatro años fui promovida como directora regional de exploración en América del Norte, Brasil y me mudé de vuelta a Houston. Y ahora soy mujer, realmente cambió completamente el juego. Es completamente diferente, no es lo mismo ser mujer cuando estás en la parte técnica o cuando empiezas a crecer en la organización. Cuanto creces en la organización, el valor que añades, las cosas que haces, disminuyen el peso y tienes políticas que aumentan mucho y mucho más en el juego. Así que todavía es un campo dominado por hombres y no podemos hacer nada o mejor. Tenemos que hacer lo que podemos para cambiar esto, pero hasta que no se cambie, no podemos hacer nada porque cuando la torta es cortada no estamos allí. ¿Por qué deberían darnos un pedazo de eso? Si tienes solo dos pedazos, yo o tú. Así que tomo mi pedazo, tomo a casa, así que no estás allí, pierdes. Y así es como funciona y esto es lo que me está pasando. Digamos que al final el negocio petrolero sigue siendo un negocio masculino. Creo que está cambiando lentamente, muy lentamente, probablemente para las personas más jóvenes aquí tendrás un mundo diferente, pero ahora sigue siendo un campo dominado por hombres y estamos muy lejos de decir que este es un mundo de igualdad de oportunidades. Necesitamos trabajar duro, necesitamos estar allí para tratar de cambiar esto, pero estoy un poco pesimista en este punto de vista porque esto necesita mucho tiempo y si no ves a personas o mujeres insertadas en la parte superior de la organización es difícil cambiar eso. De todos modos, me gustaría terminar introduciendo a mi equipo porque realmente lo que hagas en tu carrera no es que lo hagas solo, lo haces con un equipo. Mi equipo es mi esposo, mi equipo es mi hija, mi equipo es mi familia. Han hecho tanto por mí que realmente creo que es un trabajo de equipo.
¿Dónde está mi presentación? Buenas tardes. Mi tiempo está en la cabeza. Y mientras ella está trayendo mi presentación, me gustaría agradecerle Gladys por invitarme aquí. Es realmente una experiencia humillante y un privilegio estar aquí, así que gracias. Y lo que encuentro increíble, conocí a Roberta hace media hora y viene de una esquina completamente diferente del mundo, pero tenemos algo muy común y que es que logró tener una mentalidad de cambio de un lugar a otro y una vida que siempre evoluciona. Mi título es la función futura de las geólogas y ingenieras de mujeres. Tal vez también lo llame la mentalidad futura de los ingenieros de geología porque no tengo una receta o lista de cosas a hacer o una píldora mágica que haga que alguien sea exitoso porque realmente creo que es una mentalidad y espero que puedan obtener eso mientras voy a través de mi presentación que es compartir con ustedes el viaje que tomé hasta llegar donde estoy hoy y es sobre actitud. Había un hombre sabio, olvidé su nombre, que dijo que las mujeres son idiotas creer que son iguales a los hombres. Son mucho más superiores e inteligentes que los hombres y solo necesitan sumarse a eso. Y creo que mientras estoy mentir a muchos profesionales jóvenes y locales y expertos encontrarán que la mayoría de las cosas que las mujeres luchan es en la mentalidad. Así que déjenme pasaros por el viaje de cómo me convertí en directora de exploración de una de las empresas más reputable dentro de la región en el Medio Oriente. Así que voy a adormecer en esto porque es mi viaje en la vida. So, I'm gonna dwell on this one because it's my journey in life. I'm about to illustrate to you that it is nothing short of constant change. I was born in a little island east of Africa in 1965, that's how old I am. And those days, it was tough. There was no oil in my country. Our grandfathers immigrated into different parts of the world trying to find a better life. It happens that my father was into trading and he went into East Africa. In 1971, I have very little memories of it, arriving back home in Oman. And I'm an Omani and my father is one of the very few who arrived one year after the new Sultan took power. And so, I remember, I remember the first day I went to school. I couldn't speak Arabic. I spoke a language called Swahili because that's where I went to kindergarten. But then my father said, "From there, from now on, you shall stop speaking that language, you are an Arab and you shall start speaking Arabic." It's like, okay. I don't, I don't recall how I transformed, I have very little memories of that. Anyway, in, I went to school in 1983, there were no universities yet in Oman. So, there was a system where you, you write in three things that you want to study and three countries where you wanted to study. I would say 99% of the females at that time chose an Arabic country. Most of them went to Jordan, they went to Egypt. For me, I told my father, "No, I want to go to America." And he goes, "Why?" I said, "Well, because it's gonna be the same thing if I went to the Middle East." I think at that time, the rebellious part of me started. And indeed, I managed to get a scholarship to study geology. I didn't even know what geology was, but it didn't really matter to me. It really didn't. I just, I knew so much what I wanted or what I didn't want. I arrived in America not speaking a word of English, so that was my challenge number one. To be honest, I don't remember a moment where I went from speaking zero English into 100% fluent in it. I can't remember that process. I do remember one bad memory though, is when I could not speak a word of English or a few sentences. I went to supermarket and I thought 100% beef. And being in a, in a student dorm, I was happily eating that for more than one week until one of my American friends came into my room and he goes, "Ew, you're eating dog food." And not realizing that 100% beef meant dog food. But anyway, moving on, met my husband in university, got married, had three lovely children, two boys and a girl, who are right now in three different continent of the world. And then the defining moment, if I am to call it that way, came in somewhere in 1996 when my heart was broken and separated from my husband. And I remember taking my three children to my mother and after one week, I said, "This is not what I wanna do. I, I've gotta do something different." So, at that time, I was a seismic interpreter in petroleum development Oman. And I thought, okay. The next morning, I went and talked to my manager and I said, "I need to get out of this country." Those days, being a divorced woman in, in the Middle East was, and still is, it's like a, a black sheep of, of the society. So, I knew one thing I needed to get out of there. So, it was crazy because my eldest one was seven and my youngest one was hardly three years, she didn't complete three years. So, my manager said, "Yeah, fine, we'll get your posting." And so, I went home and I told my parents, "I got a posting in London." And they really thought I was possessed. Because how could you be a single mother in a foreign country with no helper and working full-time? To be honest, I was possessed. But I used to come back and my room would be full of smoke. My grandmother thought that they would run the bad spirits away and I would change my mind, but I didn't. And it was the best thing that I ever did in my life. Started life in, in London with my three kids. Went later on to Aberdeen and then came back to Oman, much more confident woman by then. And it was my first leadership in Oman. When I came back, I took over the portfolio and planning. It was the beginning of my leadership experience. And then something, another second defining moment around 2006. My boss came to my room and he looked funny. He goes, "Do you fancy going to Jordan?" And I thought he was hitting on me. I thought he was gonna take me on a holiday or something. Goes, "No, they're looking for an Arabic-speaking general manager to set up a Shell venture in Jordan. Would you like to do that?" Somehow, I said, "Yes." And then when I was driving home, I was thinking, "What am I getting myself into? I don't even know how to set a venture. I'm a geologist, let alone, you know, in a foreign country." But I, as I was going through the, the life and, and the journey of life, I started to discover that my career actually started to kick in with a mindset of getting myself out of comfort zone. And if I can leave you with a key message today is, your career begins at the end of your comfort zone. Start there. When, when you've got a project, no matter how complex it is, and when you find yourself in a situation where you are at the rock bottom, be happy. Because that's when it starts and, and I am certain, all my defining moments were like that. So, I went to Jordan as a general manager. I was the second one to arrive there and the HR manager looked at me and said, "Okay, well, you're the boss, where do you want to start?" And I didn't have a clue. Anyway, the rest is history. I used my networking to contact every single friend I had who had set up the venture before and learned. And today, as I stand here, the Jordan Shell Venture is one of the best ever-set ventures in, in their global portfolio and with zero safety incidents. But I think if I am to share how I moved from general manager to become a country chair, which is a very high post in Shell, where you actually represent, where you represent Shell reputation in that country. I got a phone call from one of the Shell guys and said, "Look, the CEO of Shell would like to come and meet the king." And I said, "Oh, okay." And I calmed down and said, "Did he actually say king?" I was waiting for 24 hours to figure out how not a person like me, who is just a general manager, going to arrange a meeting between the CEO of Shell and the King of Jordan. And then I had this idea to go and introduce myself to the ambassador of Oman. And I said, "I'm actually an Omani, believe it or not, and I would like to meet the king." He looked at me like you. But anyway, to cut the story short, he managed to actually link me and I managed to get a connection where I managed to get a link with the king to reach the CEO of Shell. That went successfully and two days later, I received an email, "You have been appointed with the Shell Country Chair in Jordan." And that's how that partner came in. She was the first female to become a country chair in Shell and I'm very proud of it. So, after, just three years back, after I finished my studies in Jordan and came back to Oman to become one and today, which is Exploration Director, I'm running an outfit of about 300 people, exploring and drilling about, that's the world's career, very busy schedule, but I'm enjoying every bit of it. So, the essence of sharing my journey with you is, I'm not any cleverer than anyone of you do, no more intelligent or capable. It was just a winged power to say, "That doesn't work for me and I can be better." And to use that power to actually drive you. Because as I said at the beginning, we are far more capable and intelligent to be there. Just every time you have a change in your life, just embrace it. Because things sometimes just have put all the parts of something together and that's what we're doing in our journey. So, so now, I am the, this is the Executive Directors Committee in Petroleum Media in Oman. It's a huge company, about 10,000 employees and 50,000 contractors. And although the picture looks positive, because you can see about five females in there, when you look at the area below that, it's actually very fragile. As I said, a company of 10,000 people, there's only about 500 female employees. So, that is sad and that is a passion for me to make a difference and, and actually bring those numbers. And I, and I know it's humble and it's gonna be a very slow process, but it's gonna happen. Mind you, I'm the only technical person in there. The female that managed to get there, they're into HR, finance and planning. So, it's a pride to actually having a technical person in that board member. So, a year ago, I was shopping in supermarket and I usually take this magazine, it's a monthly magazine, Oman Economic Review. So, I took it and I went home and while I'm in bed, I recognized, "Holy smoke, that's And I called my daughter, she's in Minnesota, and I said, "Look, I was up here." I said, "I'm one of the most powerful women." And he goes, "Mom, it's 3 o'clock in the morning in Minnesota." And I was just so excited about it. But she said something and she was in the middle of her sleep and she said, "So, what are you gonna do about it?" So, I said, "I don't know, but for the time being, I'm just gonna enjoy my ice cream and being the most powerful woman in, in Oman." So, by the way, most of these ladies, they're either ministers or some banking gurus. So, I, again, the only technocrat in that group. My daughter's question, "So, what are you gonna do about it?", led me into thinking, "So, how can I use the power and the influence I have to make the future generation a better place than what the one that I had?" Because I, to be honest, I reached my potential. I mean, what am I gonna come next? I just wanna make a difference. So, I'm gonna share with you a case history about women engineers, which I'm very proud of. And I feel if each one of you, no matter how little influence you have, if you can make something out of that influence, that slow speed can go a bit faster. So, the case history is about women engineers in PDO. Right now, we've got a shortages of manpower supply with a very strong push towards nationalization in the region. And PDO is embarking on three EOR projects. And these are very capital-intensive and they are human-intensive as well. And the population of Oman is hardly reaching 3 million. So, the market is limited. But even with the market is limited, we've got to grow our own timber, i.e. we've got to use the, the graduates that we have to the maximum. There is a very high intake of female graduates at the beginning. So, because most of the, almost 50% of the people who actually make it to our assessment centers are actually females. So, how come then we end up with only 500 females? Most of them quit somewhere in the middle. They get frustrated. So, I formed a little bit of mentoring circles to try and learn what is it that actually stops them. I'll come to that in a minute. The company has gone out of its way to actually make it a female-friendly in terms of policies, benefits, longer maternity leaves. I mean, the maternity leave in, in Oman, okay, it's not compared to Europe, but it's long, it's three months and fully paid. And, but we've got a system that any female should be very happy. It's so easy to get maids in Oman. It's so easy to get support. We've got parental support, society support. So, what is it then that stops the female engineers from making it? So, I took about 60 female engineers who have been in the company already five to 10 years and I asked them the question, "How come you're not progressing?" And they said, "Oh, half of us quit and they joined the government because it's easier there." And the other half who remained, they're not progressing very well in their career because they, they lack the, the hands-on experience. These, these ladies are operators. They learn facilities. It's like a doctor who hasn't touched a human being. So, I said, "What stops you from, from progressing farther on going to the field?" And he goes, "Well, everything is not right." So, I said, "What if I can get the things that are not right, right? Will you go to the field?" You need to bear in mind that the fields in Oman are extremely remote, it's very hot and it's 100% male-dominated. The females who go there are only like myself, who hop into the plane in the morning and come back in the evening. There is no accommodation facilities, nothing. So, how on earth are you going to grow operators and engineers? So, I walked to my CEO and I said, "I wanna make the female engineers in the field." And he goes, "You're crazy." I said, "Well, tell me why it's crazy." He said, "The society is against you, the, the law is against you." And I said, "Well, no, the law is not against me. We've got the greatest leader in the world. There is no law that says females shall not go to the field." And he goes, "Well, where are they gonna sleep?" I said, "Well, give me one wing out of your male accommodations and make it for the females." Anyway, to cut the story short, I went through at least six months of preparation in terms of accommodation and the shifts and how it should work. I went to their parents, I spoke to the husband, some of them kicked me out of their houses. It was a long story, but today, I am proud to say that these females, you know, I designed the Islamic coverall for them. We've got 20 females who have successfully completed 15 months of being in the field. I remember visiting them the first two weeks. Their skin was falling apart, they, they, they were complaining of the heat and I almost thought, "Maybe I was crazy and this is not gonna work." But you know what? Now, every time I go there, it's hard for them to come back to the, to the base because they're enjoying what they're doing so much. And guess what? When they came back to the base, they were progressed like hell. You know, so they're much, much faster compared to their peer who started with no field experience. Now, I know this is just like moving one cent grain, but if we can all move that one cent grain, nothing is impossible. I think it's again, all in the mindset. And sometimes, we, we expect so much from our companies, but it's us to say what works for us and what doesn't work for us. These women thought, "Desert doesn't work for me because it was harsh, I didn't have the Islamic coverall, I didn't have the accommodation, I didn't have the security." I blasted the corridor with CCTV to prove to them that you're secure. I, you know, but you can do it and all of us can do it. And even if you, you know, wherever you are in your career, make a difference, it will pay off and it will go much faster. Lessons from my own career is embrace change. I can say that until cows come home. Change is, is really hard when you're a young graduate, you just got married, you have a, a little one. It's so hard to feel like, "Oh my God, no, I'm gonna be a horrible mother. I can't change, I can't cope with all of this." Yeah. Get, get rid of that mother's guilt syndrome. It's the killer. One of, one day, your kid is gonna grow up and you're gonna be sitting at home flickering your fingers. Yeah? You can do both. We are far more superior than that. We can, you can do both roles and your children will not love you any less. Yeah? Okay, don't wake them up at 3 o'clock in the morning, but they are there and you know what? They will be so proud of you. One cent grain at a time, I said it, you know? It's a slow progress, but if, imagine how many cent grains can be moved with whatever the numbers we have. We will move a pile, I'm sure. Sit in the circle, not around the circle. I, I actually use this slide for the Middle East. But when you walk into conferences in the Middle East or into meetings, you would find a whole room full of men and then you would find the females sitting at the corner somewhere around or even at the workshop. They're sitting as if, you know, "I am, I'm not gonna go there." Sit in the Sit in, be seen, make a statement, "I am here." You know, be in a workshop, be part of it, not around it. I don't know how applicable this is in Europe. And the most favorable one for me is be authentic. Roberta said it very well, you know, "We're females, embrace that femininity, but with the strength of being a female." Remember, I started my presentation with a wise words that, you know, females are foolish to think that they're equal to men, we're far more superior. So embrace that authenticity. My last experience being in the world-dominated world was actually that picture there, three weeks ago, taken in New York. There was a CEO leadership conference and I received an invitation and I said, "Wow, New York shopping, here I come." But I arrived there and as soon as I arrived, I was gasping for air because it still haunts me that we are in a male-dominated field. But then, it's the mindset again. You wanna spend one week with those lots, you better be understanding their buttons. But they only have one button, they only have one button. So I walked in, they thought I was the most confident woman, but I wasn't. Deep inside me, we all have our insecurities, but it's about, "Okay, I'm gonna have an attitude of trying to understand all of them." And I think they were more scared of me than me scared of them. It worked out fine, after the first morning, I didn't even feel like a woman, it was just part of it. And I'm not saying right now I am comfortable in my own skin because it remains a world of men, but it's learning to live with it. I've developed a thick skin though, it takes time, especially from somebody who looks like me in the world of New York and Europe. So with that, just I want to tell you, embrace change and be who you are and use your mind because you've got one of the greatest minds. Thank you.
So, okay, thank you very much, Indisaran, Roberta, for your speeches. And now questions and answers, for the committee or for the presentations? Yeah?
I can just speak while you're down?
Roberta?
I'm gonna number from Tim Delta. And I have a question, so you're from Oman?
Yeah.
And it's quite clear that there's sort of an issue that women need to be integrated more, especially in the top management. But when we're sitting in Europe, it's not always clear. And I worked in consulting for a long time and I often, you know, just kind of as a joke, I look at the board members of a company. There's still just about 10% of the women, if you take out the HR and the finance director, there's just about 10% of women on the boards.
Yes.
But when I speak to my colleagues, about 25 to 30-year-old students, and I say, "I'm going to this meeting, women and sites." What, there's not a problem, there isn't a problem. How do we get men on board to solve this problem? Because we can't solve it alone, how do we get the men on board? That's the question.
Do you wanna answer that?
We are invading in the field. You will never get them on board. You will get them on board when the 50% will be women and 50% will be men. When they will start to understand my first slide, where we had men with one button and women with a lot of buttons. We are different, we needed to complete each other because it's not men or women, it's together we have a better world. So, but there is a conflict of interest, you are taking their chairs. So some men will be happy to sit there, but many of them will be not, if you have to add.
I have a slightly different view. I truly authentically believe that men want to make it work. They do, it's just they don't know how. That was my essence of speaking out of what is it that works for you and what doesn't work for you. Yeah? If you feel you want to get the attention of the executives or the vice presidents, walk into their office. I think females, they've got this vicious cycle in their mind going, "What if I say and what if I did and what if I invited him and what if I..." It's almost, it's inbuilt in our DNA and I don't know why, I wish I could just get rid of that voice. But men, in my experience, do want to know, they just don't know how. If you take the example of the females in the field, they didn't know it was that simple. They're willing to accommodate the changes if they know how, what works for us. So if you feel like they're not coming to you, grab them, grab them, say, "Why aren't you here?" This should be as important to you as whatever, you will be surprised by their reaction. I don't know, maybe it's a different...
We don't tell the same kind of experience. I think that the different culture maybe sometimes... But I am a lot of good women and bad women, I am a bad woman.
And, and they're good men and bad men.
But I think that sometimes we are used to get a better image for the company, more than, "Yeah, we think you are as good as us, why not?" But they need to show that there is a woman there, so let's get one. The one that is not speaking too much, the one is not doing so much. So sometimes I feel like that.
My concerns about that feeling is I have seen many examples where female have this conception of male conspiracy. I don't have any better words of saying it, but then they end up being... I have to swear to say, they end up being the B-word. Yeah, because they feel, "I have to be strong and I have to be stronger than them and I have to be..." They lose the femininity and authenticity of a female leader, which is nurturing and caring. So every time I mentor my girls, it's all about making sure that they ask for what they want because men are not there as their venom or not wanting them to succeed. But there are bad men out there, I totally agree sometimes. But I ignore them and I choose to work with the men who want to make it work. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Grab them, yes.
Can you speak in the microphone? I've been told that if we want to post that at any point later for other auditors to listen to the questions, then only the microphone is being heard. Remember, if you have a conference and somebody is talking in the room somewhere, then you don't hear the microphone. Let's think, you told me that. What we can do is also go with the microphone.
Yes, okay. So, Roberta, you don't think that, you said that sometimes, mainly when, today, all the companies are talking about diversity and so there is a must. But this must, I think, is an opportunity. And then, that opportunity allows women to be in charge or, I mean, or to work in that position and also to do something else. So these opportunities will come in a fluent way and not in a forced way. So I think it's, I mean, that's what is your opinion?
I agree 100%. I didn't say that we didn't have to take the opportunity. If they give us for any reason, we have to take because we need to change this world. So I totally agree. And I agreed also with her because your point of view is correct. Maybe I am taking the position of a little bit frustrated person in this moment. I am a huge positive person. People that know me know that I am like that. But I really think that depends a lot in which position you are. I felt very optimistic, very positive, very open-minded until a certain point in my career. When I reached, I think that we are cappied and that is the frustration, I feel cappied. I know that I am a right, I can do some other things. I'm a right in terms of organization, but I can do other things. This doesn't matter to me, I can start a new company, I can change the company. And I am not talking just particularly about reps. I am talking mainly about, I don't know, I have this bad experience with the south of Europe. I think it's the worst that I meet in my life. I went around the world, but the worst I have seen is south of Europe. It's very different from north of Europe, from South America, North America, maybe, yeah, Middle East. But south of Europe is terrible. I remember HR telling me, "I don't care what you do, I care just that you come here eight, five."
That's a bad HR.
I'm Italian.
Good, so maybe you understand what I am saying, no?
Okay, I'm Donatella Astrati, I work for Slumbridge and I'm also the Chair of the Oil and Gas Division in the AGE. So there is not only a female president, there is also a female Chair of the Oil and Gas Division, the biggest one, also for next year, and there will be for two years, the Chair of the Near Surface Division, that is Italian again, and it's Valentina Socco that is just taking over there. So anyway, my experience is totally different. I agree that the south of Europe is tough, it's really tough because it's your mama anyway, so if you are female, you're mama and that's it. And I come from a family, but it's different for me, I come from Bologna in Italy, a city that is slightly different in culture there from the rest of Italy. And my family were only females. So, okay, my grandparents, they were the only male in the family, but very, very sweet, very gentle. The female, my mom is still, my grandmother was still extremely strong. So I started, I decided to study geology, my mother looked at me and said, "Why geology? Why do you want to do a man job, why don't you become an engineer?" Because in Italy, an engineer counts much more than a geologist, geologist counts nothing. And then I decided to do geology and then I ended up in ENI in Milan. Later, I ended up on a rig and I just arrived and everybody looking at me, "Who are you?" "I'm Dr. Astrati." "Yes, we know, but we expected a man." "Yeah, okay, I'm here, so what are you gonna do?" So my position has been always coming from a family where there were only women. And Bologna is, was the most open-minded city in Italy. It's been compared to the northern European democracy in a certain point. So my point has been always, so I'm not a woman or a man, I'm a person, so what do you want from me? So I'm here and I'm a person. So I never put myself in front of other people, I never thought that I was less than other people. Most of the time I was the only, most of my career had been only the only woman in the office, at the point that I was getting the phone call, "I would like to talk to Dr. Astrati, you are his secretary." "No, I'm Dr. Astrati." "No, really not, but yes, carry on, I take your call." So my experience has been in Nigeria. I lived in Nigeria and everybody was, after a while, my colleagues were hating me because I can't get a transfer, they say that even a woman can enjoy this place. Everybody says it's so tough and you enjoy it. I tried to take the best of it, wherever I am. I lived for 10 years in the Middle East, I was in Abu Dhabi, I traveled in Oman and I just came back recently. And when I was coming back to Europe, everybody was saying, "It's difficult to be a woman there." No, it's not, it's not. I was talking to people and I gained the respect of the managers there. I never wanted to be a manager, but I gained the respect from a technical point of view of the local management. I remember, you probably know him, Ariel Girawan, that I was surprised at a certain point that we were at the conference and he was talking to other people, he said, "Oh, Donatella, where are you?" Came and shake my hands. So, but I've never been a manager, I never wanted to be a manager, I know that. So I did what I wanted to do and the only thing is to be confident.
So you share my point. If you stay in the technical, you will be competing, you will be the best. You can do the best, you can be the best. No, no, I agreed, I agreed, but I am not saying that you are, we are in disagreement. I am saying that we are in agreement, I agree 100% with what you say. The problem is when you start to grow in the organization, at a certain point, when there is a very few people above you and the cake is small, there is, the game is changed completely, at least for me.
Hi, I have a question. Some of you have a strong life and with some issues in the middle. Where did you get advice in the breaking points where you have to take tough decisions in your career, for your life, family, how did you manage that? And then I have a second question. Have you ever feel any non-respectful situation and how you manage that too?
Yeah, I went through quite a lot in life. The problem is, there's so much advice that none of it actually worked with me. I'm rebellious by nature, so the only advice was actually from my grandfather, who said, "Fine, you know, we may all be crazy, but don't come back home crying." And that was the best advice because every time I thought, "Do I have an option?" And the option was, "No, you don't have an option, you are on your own." And that actually is a driver to give you energy to find solutions for yourself. So every time I sit with him now, he laughs, he says he didn't actually mean it, but actually it was the best thing that he said because every time I fell into trouble, I knew I couldn't go back crying. So it was like an engine. What was the second question?
If you have feel any non-respectful situation and regarded to be a woman and then how to manage to do this?
Again, I know Roberta is not gonna, I don't, I have never felt that I was discriminated or treated disrespectfully because I'm a woman, in contrary, in contrary. Sometimes I feel like I was positively discriminated, you know? If I take my trip to New York, I bet you my boss knew that because I was a woman, he wanted to show off and send a woman. That's what I mean by a positive discrimination. So, no, I did not experience that.
Okay, in terms of advice, I used to listen, I always do whatever I want, so no advice. No advice worked for me, mainly for important things like my career or my daughter, never. Of course, we are family, so we discuss things. If I have to go somewhere, I need to get an agreement with my family. But I can say that my husband is in the years being always very supportive. Always says, "I cannot think to spend one day with you unhappy because I cannot survive to that. So let's do whatever you want, I will figure out how to solve that." And the second question was about respected. I think that I was always respected and I'm still respected. I don't know if I am very well understood when I say what I said. I know that I am... I know that I am supported, respected. I know that I am important for my company. They always give me whatever I want, because I work very hard. I had a lot of success, I was lucky or whatever you want. So they need me. They give me always whatever I want. Now, it's another thing, seeing that they are making space for me where they are. That is different. If I want money, they give me money. If I want move, they make me move. If I want a project... I invented even that Greenland is in North America a couple of years ago, because I run North America, I decided that Greenland is mine too, because the dorsal Mediterranean is going there like that. So I say, "Okay, this is my..." "Okay, everybody shut up, I took that." So from that point of view, I never felt discriminated, never, ever. But I mean something more subtle when I say that we are cappied. We need to... In the board of our company, we have female, but in accounting, finance, numerous, you don't see anybody in the core business. Core business is a male field, it's complicated. That is us, and you can work for me. But it's very different. You can work for me, you can do whatever you want. Then let's see if I can give you my place.
I think my... My question relates to that. You had this interesting remark about the cake, right? And you sort of answered it before, but how do you make sure you're there when the cake is distributed, right?
Good question, I am not there.
But how do men ensure that they're there? How do men ensure that they're there? It's equal to, men also don't know how is that cake going to be cut?
Well, partly. I'm watching my watch now, because in fifteen minutes, I have to go. My daughter's waiting for me, she has to be fed. So I'm not going to be here when you're mingling afterward, which would probably mean a missed opportunity for me, right? So if you're saying, "I made a choice," or "I didn't make a choice, I was best for my family, I was best in the office, and I did that by being very effective." So I have my eight hours in the office, and I do a great job at work. But just being there, I guess, may also play a very important role. And still, you managed to get where you are.
I wasn't doing my eight hours. I can tell you something, that is a story. When I was in Brazil, that was one of the most challenging projects in my life. I started almost from scratch. In four years, we had a $20 billion company. And I can tell you that I was waking up in the morning, having breakfast with my daughter, going to the office, working all day, in the evening, going home, staying with my daughter, going back to the office, stay until 3, 4 o'clock AM, going to sleep a couple of hours, stay, being there with my daughter in the morning. And I did that so long that at a certain point, I say, I thought, "I'm going to fail, because I am too tired." But motivation, I love when I feel I did it, and I did it. So at the end, my daughter come back home from school one day, she told me, you know, she was nine, "I went to school today, I met this girl, she's very nice, but she doesn't know what a turnaround is." Can you imagine how stupid she is? Because she was leaving my turnaround coming. All the family was shocked with that. So when I say that you have to find equilibrium, and when you have to work with all those buttons, is that you have to work very hard. It's not easy, it's a challenge.
May I ask you, why can't your husband just take care of that little girl of yours until you go home? Or next time, get some spare in the fridge?
I did it for my son, but she doesn't take the bottle.
When she's hungry enough, she will.
Hi. Well, first, I applaud you for both sharing up your stories, because it's very inspirational. I share with you, because I come from the Middle East, I'm kind of like following similar footsteps so far. And it's not, it's hard enough, maybe, being a woman in the world... Well, hard enough, sometimes it's hard. Maybe sometimes it's harder coming from the Middle East, being of a certain background, and so on, so forth. Now, the, just, actually, it's something along the, what she was saying, and along what you were saying, there is two types of issues here. There is the world at work, and there is the world at home. Meaning, you have a great support system, you have someone who's following you, or who's willing to follow you and go around. But we don't hear about a lot about that. Not, the women usually, it's a given that they follow the husbands whenever they go. However, how many women do you see go on expatriations, and the man follows? It's really a rare example. I mean, when I go back to your story, there was kind of like, not a breaking point, but like a push, when your life as a wife kind of like stopped, and you wanted to do something more, and you went for something else. I'm not saying this is always the case, but what I'm saying is that it's pretty hard for a woman to have a real partner. A real partner is not just a partner who says, "Yeah, you can work." And then he says, "Well, you have to pick up the kids from school, because I'm gonna be at work." Where he would drop the kids early in the morning, or something like that. You know what I mean? Like, sometimes they work it to their advantage, but it's not really a partnership. Now, this is kind of missing, because if you have this kind of support system, you have better chances of really making it work. Whereas if you're married, and you say, like, you get a great opportunity elsewhere, I'm afraid that the husband might say, "Well, yeah, but I'm here, I cannot move." What would you do? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I know this may sound like a cliche, but it's choices, and each choice has got a bill. Yeah? It's how much of that bill you can afford. It's all personal choices. And I have seen it work, like in my case, where I was already separated. But I've also seen it work with couples who decide to... One of them, a female goes abroad. My best friend is actually in France, doing her medical degree there. The husband goes there every three to four months. It's a choice, and it's the size of the bill. And if the husband says no, it's a personal choice. No one can actually steer you there. It's, and I think, depends how selfish you are, I come first. I'm a very selfish person. I come first, and if my partner can't see that, then I don't mind paying the bill. But it's different for everyone.
Ah, well... It's a man, it's a stand-up man here now. A different point of view. What is your name, please? Yeah? Can never... We're gonna cut a cake after you leave, all right? We're gonna cut a cake after you leave, all right? What I wanted to, just made a brief comment. In terms of cutting the cake, yes, I think one way you can actually make yourself notice is by just not going to the office to do the everyday task that are given to you. You need to perhaps be noticed by helping your manager and come with different ideas. So that's one way of being noticed. And then maybe you can be in that meeting when they cut the cake. So that's what's a very simple comment. And another comment is, I think that a lot of company, and you guys, may I call you guys? You come a long way. I mean, you have a lot of opportunities in the oil industry, and in outside the oil industry as well. So please don't feel like if you don't have opportunities. I think you have great opportunities in the oil industry, women's. I think this lady CEO is the Kuwait Oil Company.
Kuwait?
Yes, I mean, she's achieving tremendous in her career, the same as yourself. And I'm coming from the Middle East, I had the opportunity to work in the Middle East. I can see there is opportunities in the Middle East for women's. It's just, it's a vision that we were giving here, perhaps, before we go and work there. But yes, you do have opportunities, and good luck.
I really don't mean to sound biased, but I truly, with every fiber in me, I believe there are more opportunities for women in the Middle East more than anywhere else in the world. I truly believe in that.
Thank you. I forgot, I work for SEPSA, and it's one of the companies owned by the Abu Dhabi government now.
Okay. So I think that it's time to finish, either around seven, or the last question? No? Okay. So thank you very much for your attendance and for your speeches. And remember that you can fill in the survey that we gave you at the beginning of the session, if you want, and you gave it back to us. So Gladys, if you want to say something else?
We have a cake.
Well, first of all, I want to thanks Roberta and Intizar, really inspiring and entertaining and emotional, and... But mainly what I get is that you are passionate. And then, well, I mean, that's what's happened to me también, también, in Spanish, also. It's, we, when you get passion, passionate about something, you get the strength. And what happened really, today, the opportunities are there, it's true. But still, we have to work even 50% more, or even more, to be kind of in the same position. The expectations from the companies to women is high. The expectations are high. And so that is the reality, but it's not impossible. So thank you so much, and also for being so transparent, and also for sharing really your true stories, and that are inspiring, I mean, so thank you so much. And also for coming from far, because both of them came, Intizar, you arrived today also, right? This morning, and Roberta as well. One from Oman, and the other from Houston. So appreciated your effort to be with us here. And for the rest of the people, I think what we want to know is, and that is really important for the committee of the special interests community, is what you are, what expectations you have. And if you have, if you want to have, for example, this time of meeting next year in Madrid, where we will have the annual of the AEG. And so today, you have channels, channels that you have to, that you can use. The association is providing these channels and support, so you can have this environment of discussions. And also, I think, to have speakers that talk about the type of realities that we have today will help all of us to face the day-to-day job and choose, because this is a matter of deciding what we want to do. I mean, it's like, this special interest community for women is, you want to use it, you use it. You don't care, you don't use it. I mean, that's what's happened, even the opportunities are there. But today, for example, for some opportunity, you have to pay a high price. That is the reality. So you take it, or not. I mean, it's up to us sometimes. Until things come more natural, and even, and equally, but for the time being, it is what it is. So, I mean, you are not forced to leave. There are some drinks, and some chips, and some things, some... Unfortunately, this year, we don't have the settings with tables that could help us to interact. But if you want to keep chatting, or I don't know if the guests have some times also for other questions, if you have other commitments, you can go. But if you want to interact or chat between all of you, you are welcome. Otherwise, thank you so much. Thank you again, Nuria and Mariela, for organizing and for doing the hard work that you are doing for this committee. And thank you again, Roberta and Intizar.
Thank you.